One, it's morning. Certainly glad to see everyone. Certainly glad to be here. We have a lot to be thankful of, to thank God for. And again, at the New Year's Day, I wanted to have a scene of many, 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 too. So we are here for the second meeting of the month. As you know that we're not here for a long time because time is passing too fast and we realize so. You should make good of all the time that we have. So with that, at this time, I am calling meeting in order. And I would like to call him Councilman Bailey. If we can stand for the invitation and remain standing, both please.
Thank you. You all bow our heads, go to the Lord in prayer. In my gracious love and heavenly Father, we thank you again for today. This is the day that we should rejoice in. This is the day that was promised, but this is the day that we can fulfill your dreams for us. And our dreams for ourselves and each other. Help us to matter to each other, Lord. Help us to love and care for and watch over each other. This world's full of evil and sin. And everything against each other, but help us to do as you command. Love each other as you love us. Help us to appreciate what's done for us. And let us not remind to go out of our own way to do for others. Remind us that we're here sharing this earth together. We're sharing this time together. Therefore, we should always be watching out for each other. Watch over our city, our state, our country. Watch over each of our homes. Watch over the citizens of our city, the park patrons. City manager, the mayor and his council. Give us the wisdom to choose things that are correct. Give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. But also let us stand up for those around us. The need to support and someone to stand up for, for this country. The many are supposed to watch out for the few. And the few are supposed to watch out for the many. So teach us to do our job. Teach us to do it honestly. And to do it well. And to do it with no self satisfaction in mind. These things I ask in the precious name of Jesus Christ, our goodness and Savior. Thank you. Precious light. Attention. Salute. Bless.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands as one nation of God. Indivisible, indivisible, and infinite, and ever and ever.
Thank you, Councilman Bailey, for that prayer. And I believe in other prayers. We will proceed on. At this time, we do not have any presentation or confirmation. And I would like to call upon a clergy. At this time, I would like to ask this council. A motion for the approval of the December fifth council meeting. As well as January second work session and also the January third council meeting. Since we were all present, I would ask the council that we take this all at once. So with that, I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the work session as well as motion.
All you two approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Davis. And I have a second. Second, Councilman Bailey. Okay, Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter. Yes. Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Fordy.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Proceeding on, council, I would look at this time like an access and even up in this business that anyone would like to discuss at this time. There are not being any, we will proceed with the resolutions. And under the resolution, we have economic development. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign and enter to a contract agreement. With Playthrough.ai for software services in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the city council of the city of Fenton, City of Alabama is committed to the economic growth and development of the city. And whereas it is a desire to enter into a contract with Playthrough.ai for software services. And whereas the contract is for a period of twelve months commencing on January sixteen, twenty twenty four. And whereas the contract is an amount not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fenton, City of Alabama does hereby authorize and direct the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into a contract with Playthrough.ai for software services in the amount not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred dollars. Pass the proof and adopt it this seventeenth day of January, twenty twenty four.
All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Davis. Council, we got all heard of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion, council. Well, we call him, may I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion?
Here's your mayor, or, we just might have a citizen of Fenton.
Did you eat your wings?
I had a waffle and two bowls this morning.
Good.
Mayor, council, good morning.
Morning.
So Playthrough AI is a relatively new company. Came out in about two thousand seventeen. And it's probably one of the coolest pieces of, of, I got, one of the coolest tools in our toolbox, actually, say. As far as recruitment is concerned for economic development. So what it is, because of, because of these things, we are trapped there. Our GPS is turned on and every, Playthrough has the ability to know where we go. What times we go there, where we're going from, where we're going to, lots of different information, what we do with that data. Because most of the decisions that we make in the economic development department are heavily based on what the data tells us, right? And so what place where data plays a role helps us to recruit certain retailers, helps us to identify real trade areas when it comes to specific types of retailers that we want to recruit. We can, we can show manufacturing, what real drive times are. So if the company, the company's interested in locating here from a manufacturing perspective, but their freight, maybe the workforce is not available. We can legitimately show based on manufacturing that we have in our, in our area today and how far people drive for this thing. So we can use that data to help support our argument when it comes to recruiting those things. We can also use another, other department throughout the city. So parks and recreation, those events all the time. We can identify exactly how many people that come to those events. We can, we can identify exactly how many people gone to camp here for a concert. The next concert we do, we can specifically market certain marketing pieces towards that group that came to those concerts. So again, it's unbelievable, it's really, really unbelievable data that we can use to help us make decisions for lots of opportunities. And one of the coolest pieces that I've been able to get my hands on some.
I have a question, Sean. I never said I had that thought. Music, music. Anyway, you know, like another thing I've worked for, went to the U.S. We could try having those girls in it, store a shop. And do tell me that it's possible that you get that store in Boston, Boston, you're.
Absolutely, I believe that certainly, certainly, that'll happen. We'll be able to, so the multiple use in Maroon goes for instance. That area, just to be specific about that area, it's been very difficult at certain minutes when a retailer looks at that area. They want to do three mile and ten mile radiuses and a lot of times they don't see a lot of households. But we know that we're drawing traffic from much further than a three to ten mile radius. So because of this data, now we can prove that we're getting people from steel and hatchery, or visiting with Fort Mitchell. And then we're able to identify that so that we can, you know, we can make decisions based on that. So, but as far as the parks are concerned, absolutely, we think that, we know that we can identify the amount of people that enter our parks these days. And because of that, we can say, okay, do those people entering those parks go shopping specific grocery stores afterward or do they go there beforehand? And then we can use that to help sponsor parks in our, in our, in our community as well.
Well, we're glad to see that happening here in, you know, it's, it's tremendous too, there is definitely. We here, we, 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 I wish it all of us, uh, a week ago, I mean, I talked to a young man, I mean, he spoke, I went visit. And this guy, he's done so bad, he got a book still missing. And the pressure was battery, were meetings. And another lady said, we're so bad, we don't, we always, we shot right there and come over.
This is out of, we've seen some of that, that grocery story. We know that absolutely captured, captured Fort Mitchell and the large forces south being continued to tap Russell Park. It's how central Russell County area. So we know that for sure, that's what we said. So that, and it also tells, it doesn't correlate the sales, right? So we can identify how much people spend, but we can, we can identify how much traffic the stores have, the store, store has, which can translate into, to sales. So more, more people there, more sales. And the program.
I just wanted to ask again, some of the many impacts, the, uh, the, the top level, if we will, for lack of a better term, is the retail traction. And how would that impact the citizens here in Fenton?
Right, so retail has been probably the most, will be probably the most predominantly used for this program. For instance, a way that we would use that would be if we wanted a certain retailer that wasn't located in our community, but was located in that particular town.
Right.
We could showcase, we could identify exactly how many people from Fenton, South Lake County, Northern Russell County, Russell County, really drops that about, um, what pertains to us. Our trade area, go to those stores in Columbus. So then we can go back to those retailers and say, we have people in it and they know their own numbers for sure. But a lot of times they don't do their own homework. It's up to us to do their homework for them, to be able to show them that they need to be in our community here quite. Because this amount of people come to shop at your location. So if you put another location this, this location, you're going to just grow this. It's not going to be, you'll be taking some, but you have an opportunity to grow it. So we can use this data to help us with that.
It's going to eventually, uh, impact the growth here in Fenton, one hundred percent, one hundred percent.
Actually, uh, it already nails this, to be honest. We, we've been able to use some of this data, uh, through the use of Alamo Power. Um, but we need to use it on a more regular basis. And so some of the data that we've been able to fully use is already there, but then it does.
Thank you, thank you for the futuristic approach.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, maybe it's like it does, it re- it reinforces what y'all tell people already. You can now prove the facts that you tell them. You tell, like you mentioned yesterday, Charlotte coming here, you know, they'll have their private customers. Going to anything on the north end of Columbus, or Hope Life or whatever, and these people are coming out of some inspection. And see on what works. You be over here, this, these people will stop here. And it just reinforces what you're telling them already. And of course, you know, they lose it one store, they gain it another one. If you open up and you're going to gain your customers that aren't going that direction to begin with. So it's a tool that can help everybody. And it's something that is way to future. I'm not sure I like the point there. Everybody to know where you are. I found, I would never like that idea of somebody knowing exactly where each of us are individually, but, uh, but again, it's, it's, it's where we live, it's the technology. And that's not going to go away. It's just going to be where it's going to be for me. But again, at times it helps also solve crimes, find lost people, get people out of distress, someone in trouble. So it's, it, everything has its doing, it's, this has way more positive.
I thought, that's, that's a problem for us, at least now we can.
There you go, use, use five groups for the good.
Right, that one.
And that's, that's a positive too, the Lord has blessed us well.
It absolutely could be, absolutely could be. Now there's, there's some of the ways there, but that data is, is probably not better than our people. This is right, thank you, yes.
Thank you, Sean, thank you very much.
I'd say it's, it's all worked very well for the city. As far as, we just, we have maybe all this. Again, through presentation.
We don't just pull a big, uh.
You know, a citizen, steady, you know, look to the state, solve crimes, know what's going on. All this data that's here, we plan to produce one hundred percent, and it can get, you know, I've seen, Chris said the one. Um, talked about this morning, as far as, I can't. Um, but I would, I can't, we're only have chief to speak on this. Uh, chief of public safety, whatever. I'm speaking on how many crimes we have been solved, even with those. I've had people come to my office, I'm just going to be honest with you. And claim that their son is in there and pretty so-called honest person, there's no doubt about that. So when you bring it up, show them a good people in, in the car. Sometimes they take that right back, sometimes they take it off because that eye in the sky.
Don't lie.
Don't lie. It's, it's got to be there and the reason why I like it so much, where people who stay in circumstances, add in some things like that. Place things on people and it was not fake and it was corrupt system. Discorrect identification of people has totally changed that game. And, and doing this also taking us to the marketing aspect and our planning. We've been able to thank these guys. And Sean, the, the good job, because like I say, you know, presenting things before we just waste that dead money on, you know, who I winged, what's accepted, whatever it is to say. Is we look and he's done a good job. He's been put out when he was utilizing the service of other organizations, it's just that. So, and I thought we got a decision on this and he did a good job on this when turning this out. So this is half of what it's worth. So we don't want to be that part of.
We are so good. So through the years, so literally through the years, I think we found out about this program in two thousand nineteen. So since then, we've been able to negotiate the price of this thing. So, um, start off at least a half of what we, what we thought of the thing. So it is just the way I, it's just the way I, the next three, I just, I would consider it a blessing.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Sean, and council. With that, at this time, council, I'd call him both. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Carter, yes. Councilwoman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fordy.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Senior honor council, the engineer and department. We have a resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with Loop Global Corporation to access the network for the EV chargers. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the city of Fenton City is in the process of installing the EV chargers from the funding provided by Adeka in Alabama, Iowa. And whereas Loop Global, Loop Global E, being the supplier of the chargers and the network, offers a pay per use network plan which allows the city to send and change billing rates. And whereas the city will set the billing rate at zero point zero five per minute. And the fee to use Loop's network will be ten percent of the revenue generated by the chargers. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama hereby authorizes the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with Loop Global E to access the network for the EV chargers. Pass the proof and adopt it this seventeenth day of January, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Mrs. Davis. It is a common truth, as you were telling me, it has. Council, we have all heard of the resolution. At this time, I'd like to ask for any comments or discussion? Okay, if not, at the second. Is Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, that's Andrew.
Andrew?
Yeah, Andrew.
I'm down. Is, uh, did you eat your wings?
You know, I was, I'm ready to go.
Way to go, gotta be ready.
He knows what he's doing, this is his secondary degree.
Angel is not here this morning, but, um, I'm pretty, pretty knowledgeable about what's been going on, prepped for this. Um, doing research for this network access that we need to do. Um, looked at a couple of different places to negotiate the best one. Um, Loop Global provided the, I think, most beneficial one for our community. Uh, there was some hesitation about how much usage we were going to get out of these chargers. And the grant that we were applying for requires them to be up for five years at minimum. Uh, whether we choose to be longer than that, but us, uh, moving forward. But Loop Global provides a ten percent revenue cost. Like, so all the revenue that's generated from these, uh, ten percent of that will be Loop's cut. Uh, the other, other access, like network access, um, provide a more a monthly cost and we wanted to be in agreement with these rather than, uh, spending our money than they're making potentially. So this was the best option for, for that, that opportunity. Yeah, you have any, you have any questions?
Well, uh, as you notice, as the, uh, quite rare, as it says, we can set and change the building. Now, this is something new for this community. Uh, it's, it's going to air and flow. Uh, and will be put out to the community in their structure that we can would be able to charge, but we also have the ability to change it because this is all brand new. Uh, so, you know, anytime you do something new, it airs and flows, then you have to get that sweet spot because again, uh, you know, we work for the taxpayers and we want to make sure we, uh, stewards of the money. To make sure that this is done correctly. But I do want to say it's, it's new to us, uh, it's common. So, you know, there's nothing free and we shouldn't expect anything free.
I think to reinforce that as well, Loop's software that they provide gives us the ability to check on it, on, check on each individual charger as well as how they're doing overall. We're able to check on a, on like, whenever you please, to see how well they're charging, how often they're charging, how much power they're distributing, who uses, well, not necessarily who, but like how often these chargers need to be used. So we have all that data analytics, the review and change to make it charging the best.
Andrew, which also went to the, the grant, the, and also the private sector grants, that also yield a statement that allow us to.
Yes, so the grant fund that we received from Adeka was for this EV charging. And they are continuing to provide that grant funding in the future. Um, it looks like it's going to be a long-term thing that they want to send money for. Um, we were the first, I think, in this area to receive that grant funding, but I think the following grant cycle, um, the private sector has found the funding and has been applying for and received grants for it as well. There's, uh, I know that two Burger King locations received funding for EV chargers and we know it's not official.
And I'm grateful, I'm glad you said that. And we, we don't want to get into the service station business now. The city is not getting into that.
Right.
We, we all want to manage this and again, I do want to be in a way, you know, it's only air and flow. Until we find the sweet spot that's beneficial for the community as well as the city, because the city is official.
What about the maintenance and upkeep these things too? Do we have a department that does that?
Yes, so we do have a finer warranty that is provided by Loop Global and the true upside of private chargers. Um, they, if any issues cause the, um, chargers to go down for whatever reason, we have them on call, on standby. And this network agreement allows us to continue that, uh, in the future.
Who, who, who may, who, notify the maintenance or check so they can receive. I mean, they're going to need your department or if there's somebody that, do they have a number on them where you can call either they need you or?
Yes.
I never blow that one on them, so that's why I'm asking.
Sure, so they have, uh, the, the app that Loop provides as well. Um, if there's any issues regarding the charging experience, they can notify that. And the software that we have on our side will be able to see, uh, in real time when something goes down or something is an issue and we can call in. People can come check that.
Yeah, I just didn't want somebody, you know, first thing, I was going to say, if we don't charge, well, you gotta go online. It's like, I guarantee that'd be the first thing that's on the map. Y'all charging something that ain't working, but the point is, you know, if they've got a way to get in touch with someone, then that pays care of that. I mean, they can't work a hundred percent the time, all the time, and that would play a, impossible thing to do. They gotta, they, they gotta, they gotta, you know. That's what I mean, what they're not using. Yeah, so they can't talk to another, but that's, that's the point. There'll be some people who argue that, that, you know, uh, they're supposed to work force. Nothing is, you know, they'll prove it, it's, it's, somebody can damage it. Like you said, you can have a manual, you know, I had it, so, uh, you know, necessary, it's not somebody's fault sometimes. Sometimes it's, uh, you know, something, and the man that happens. So that's why I was asking that, thank you.
The grant also, the Adeka grant requires, I think, a, a forty-eight hour downtime. Like if there's an issue, it can only be down to forty-eight hours to maintain, uh, accuracy. And the expert, the Loop Global that we are partnering with here, um, I believe, first of all, we have like a four hour type of interview to get information.
Oh, yeah, they, they, we don't want to be in the business, not even, so they not going to take on and get out there to take care of, you know, that one there. That ten percent worldwide, rather than where they go after, means a lot to them, doesn't it? So that's, uh, that's, it's, it's like a really good contract, it really does.
It's most beneficial.
If y'all agree with that.
On the charger.
Good job, man.
Thanks.
Bye, man.
Thank you. Appreciate your hand, council.
Thanks, council. With that, council, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please. Would you approve that motion? Councilman Fordy, we have a second.
Second.
Second, councilman Carter?
No.
We get you on a rebound, or? There will be another opportunity. We have the motion, we have the second. Mrs. Davis.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Councilwoman Carter, yes. Councilwoman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fordy.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Also, council, proceeding on, the engineer department, the resolution in reference to authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC for cleanup and debris and related items in the event of a federal or state declared emergency. Mrs. Davis.
Whereas the engineer department has to reach the specifications for his after debris removal services contract, which will allow the city to utilize contract services for the cleanup of debris and related items in the event of a federal or state declared emergency. And whereas bids were received for this contract on Thursday, October fifth, twenty twenty three. And whereas four contractors submitted bids for this project with DRC Emergency Services LLC being the lowest responsible bidder. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Fenton City, Alabama does hereby authorize the mayor and city manager to sign and enter into an agreement with DRC Emergency Services LLC to perform the work as outlined in the specifications for state of project. Pass the proof and adopt it this seventeenth day of January, twenty twenty four.
Okay, council, all of us have heard of the resolution, this, and read about the clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion, please.
Would you approve?
I have a motion, councilman Davis, I have a second. Second, councilman Bailey. Any comments or discussion?
Just the mayor and, and we're implementing, not very personal things, this is, I just, I just.
Morning, Chris.
Morning.
Well, how are you feeling?
Good, how about you?
All right, thank you.
Uh, you have any specific questions?
Uh, we, if you share a little bit like our personal things, see, uh, how it works with, it's a little camera, or somebody.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so basically this contract is one where, uh, should we have any natural disasters?
Declared, declared.
Uh, where hurricanes or nades, any kind of weather event, that would, so that it would, you know, the governor would instigate, uh, the state emergency. And so that would release federal funding, which would in turn allow us to get help to, for cleaning. So we're talking about large scale, something that our forces wouldn't be able to handle. Trees, debris, you know, even how we destroyed, strung all over the community. This contractor coming in, we already had set prices for things, for hauls, for taking down trees, cutting trees up, uh, all of that nature, but then come, come in and set up shop, basically. And they'll, they'll set up a station to manage all this material, separate it out. Cause all these things have to be regulated. When FEMA, when they pay for these items, it all has to be specifically divided up so it can be paid correctly, home, by a certain, you know, whether it was tons or feet or whatever. And so they're going to come in and organize all that stuff and do it per finger regulation. And that way we can give the system between financially, they're going to do the work for us. And make sure that our communities put back in, and shape it, or as close as possible.
That's possible.
So we can come in and start rebuilding. So that, that's the intent of this contract. And everything is, uh, all the items are already paid for, so they're, they're supposed to mobilize within eight hours to come down here and set. We leave the room and they start bringing in teams and equipment based on what, you know, we need in, in our community to be good, cleaned up, backed and shaped.
But again, this was, let's say you're, uh, we have a, that, uh, we have a mobile act. From, and this, uh, who gets questions on this, who gets questions on, uh, I don't work, but they, they got a kind of a mobile act, they just think that.
As far as, as far as assistance from FEMA or as far as the contract?
The contract.
So the contractor is in contract with us specifically. So they, in that contract, it says, it says they're going to honor no matter what, even if they have a contract with Columbus, or they're like, they're, they have to supply us with resources that we need depending on what, you know, what cleanup and what, whatever we need, they're going to supply them, they say, for us.
Regardless of what they, what they're on, they, they, you know, eight hours, or something like that.
Yes, they're responding, in the process, and helping us to give it, give it better.
Yeah, the biggest thing a lot of times in, with, with, because after like, that, like fires in Hawaii, hurricanes in Florida, one that we had, Boyard and everything, this station, is that it affects so many local people that you can't get help local. We've got one for fire department, one for police department, one for sheriff's department. We've got one for fire department, one for police department, one for sheriff department. But their homes are tore up, their businesses are tore up, their families are taken, just like our families are. And our husbands and wives and all the hollering, us to get our own power back on before we worry about the neighbor's power. So the power company have to do the same thing. So it's, it's so messed up locally when it happens, that you have to go outside the box to get the proper help. So when you see these hurricanes affecting them, you'll see the power company standing a couple hundred miles from where those things are gonna come in, and they're out of Carolina. We sent people all the way up to New York when, when hurricanes came through up in New Jersey. They just do that because you've got to have the island people to come and get it. And that's just, it's, it's, it's almost mandatory. So these contracts here, you know, are, are life-saving for the community. So they're very, very, very important that we've got some help from outside. They got enough support that they have one with U-Boll, so that's basically from San Luis El Grande. They've got enough people to come in and help just like happens with these hurricanes. And they, they prepare for that to be probably in a geographical area, not just one city. Probably a lot of people, one city you see, it has to be, you know, something a little bit unusual like floods or torn areas or something. Uh, but when the media come in and see it, it's, it's areas. So that's prepared in their areas that they have to, I'm sure. So this is, this is big news.
Part of the process, they monitor, uh, whether.
They go in time.
And so in, in contracts that they, they have in those areas, that whether they're gonna be, they're gonna be communicating with us ahead of time. So that we can kind of get them to, you know, what they're arguing against, so they're not like, they're not like, they're not like, they're not like. Cause we know about new nations, we know, but they're all eventually, they can get, uh, they can, they can, they may not have the most, but we can call them, so.
Well, you're right, you know, where about the need, you know, the time, you know, that, 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 that. I see the, you know, this girl, well, yesterday, they put sand on bridges and roads, and they, you know, they, they try to stay ahead of us. Uh, that's just too quick. Sometimes, you know, the clothes, food, the, the, and I'm kind of glad what we do, so that's worth it, I say that, but nothing ever happens. So I kind of like going to make that, even though I go ahead and get the golf clubs out and give you that laugh, who that person I said? They, they're gonna get teeth, so not in school, that's it. But it's when they don't, when they don't get it, it's substitutional, but it's, uh, it's a whole practice, you know, that. And then if you already have a plan, it works, and this works well, I think, if you're there.
And always saying that you have a plan, so you have a set machine that's active on the bounce. It's out there in the area, especially in the area of, um, the irrelevant, it's always, and we're trying to get away.